Welcome to the Wednesday, August 5th, Special Meeting of the Walnut Creek City Council. This meeting is being held in accordance with the Brown Act as currently in effect under the State Emergency Services Act, the Governor's Emergency Declaration related to COVID-19, and the Governor's Executive Order N-2920 issued on March 17, 2020 that allows attendance by members of the City Council, city staff, and the public to participate and conduct the meeting via video conference. Video conference locations are not open to the public. As some attendees are participating for the first time, and this is their first teleconferencing meeting, I wanted to welcome everyone and talk briefly about the public comment process at special meetings. Under California law, public comments at special meetings are limited to subjects on the agenda only. Therefore, public comment will be taken prior to council consideration of each item for those items listed on the agenda this evening. Comments listed on the items of the consent calendar will be taken during the consent calendar portion. When I open the public comment period, please use the raised hand feature or press star nine if you're connected by audio only. This will alert the staff that you have a public comment and you would like to provide it. Please wait your turn and once brought into the meeting, state your name and the city of residence. As the council is conducting these meetings via video conference and given the COVID-19 pandemic and the increased number of speakers that have wanted to make comments on various issues during our meetings and consistent with city policies related to public comments, each speaker will have two minutes to make your remarks. To provide a live remote comment, join the Zoom video conferencing meeting. The meeting ID is 999-47866157. That's 999-47866157. The password is 484852. That's 484852. Should you choose not to provide comments but would like to vote via the meeting, you may do so in any one of the following ways. You can do a YouTube Live by visiting the City of Walnut Creek's YouTube channel. You can go to a cable broadcast Comcast Channel 28 Incorporated Walnut Creek only, Rossmore Channel 26, WAVE Channel 29, and ATT Uverse Channel 99. Livestream is occurring on the city's website. Would the city clerk please call the roll?
Councilmember Francois?
Here.
Councilmember Silva?
Here.
Councilmember Waddell?
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Wilk?
Here.
Mayor Haskew?
Here. Item number two is public communications, and that is related to Agenda Item 3 only. Under California law, public comments at special meetings are limited to subjects on the agenda. At this time, public comment will be received related to Agenda Item Number 3: Interview Board of Appeals' applicants and action on appointments. At this time, we will take any public comments. Please remember that you need to raise your hand, and if you're coming in by audio only, press star nine. At this moment, I will ask city clerk if there are any members of the public who would like to provide comments.
We have Scott Rafferty will bring in first.
I'm sorry, but it's difficult to get the agenda and Zoom at the same time, and I now see that my comment relates to Item 5.
Thank you, Scott. Nice to talk to you. We'll see you again at Item 5. Anybody else?
There doesn't appear to be any more hands raised for verbal comments.
Thank you. Okay, so at this moment and with the city clerk's assistance, we're going to go a little bit over what our procedures will be. We have three vacancies and two alternates on the Board of Appeals, and we're going to have six questions, and the candidates are all going to be brought in at once. We will ask each one to be the first person to answer each question, and they will have, let's see, 60 seconds to 75 seconds, which is a lot shorter than minutes, to have the question. The council has had the opportunity to review the questions. I am going to start with question one, and I will probably wrap up with question six. Does anybody want to pick a question in particular so that we will go in order? That not being the case, I will ask Mayor Pro Tem to ask question number two. Are you aware? Okay. I will ask Councilmember Waddell to ask question number three. I will ask Councilmember Francois to ask question four, and I will ask Councilmember Silva to answer ask question five. At the end of the session, while these are happening, we will have a small break while each of the council members will rate the candidates from 1 to 6, 6 being the one that they most feel should be on the board. And then, at the end of that time, we will have a compilation of our numbers. So please be ready. Figure out a system where you will keep track of the candidates and their rating.
I have a quick question. So clerk, are we going to be filling out a piece of paper? Are we going to be doing the poll online, or are we just going to be calling out ordination orally?
Yes, so we have an Excel spreadsheet that we will pull up at the end, and we'll go to each council member to rate the candidates 1 through 6. And I'll show it on the screen for all.
Okay, thank you.
And city clerk, do you have the order of candidates available?
Yes, we'll bring that up now.
Thank you. Okay, so Mark will be the first first, and then, oh gosh, Bernie will be the second first, and Michael will be the third first, Bob will be the fourth first, Philip will be the sixth, and Marilyn will be the last first. Everybody understand the rules?
They go in that same order each time?
Exactly.
Okay, thank you.
So city clerk, we will keep this order on the screen at all times too, so nobody gets lost?
Yeah.
Okay, so I will ask the first question to Mark Lopez. Briefly describe your skills and experience that make you a strong candidate for the Board of Appeals.
Mayor, could I ask that all the candidates have their video on as well as their, I mean, I know they'll turn their audio on, but there we go. Thank you.
So Mark, are you unmuted?
How's this?
Oh, sounds perfect.
Okay, well, thank you. Thank you for this opportunity to be considered for this board. I am a licensed architect. I've processed over 3,000 projects before various jurisdictions all through California. I understand the intent of the building codes. In addition to being an architect, I am a construction dispute arbitrator and have been participating in alternative dispute resolution for the last 17 years. I have presided over 1,300 cases, a lot of them involving construction defects, and a lot of them involving code violations. I like helping people resolve disputes. I think certain disputes and certain issues are best resolved in this kind of a forum. I wouldn't want a judge or a jury to decide matters like this. I think it's important to have a qualified trier of fact to provide a fair and just award. That's all I have for this question.
Thank you, Mark. Bernie, Mark, would you unmute yourself and answer the question? And Mark, when you're not being asked the question, would you mute yourselves, please?
Okay. Can you hear me?
Yes, thank you.
Yes, thank you very much for this opportunity. I've been in construction for about 40 years, the last 10 years as a construction manager, representing various municipalities on their projects. Part of my goal or role has been to interpret specifications and codes to make sure they're in compliance with the project and also the specifications. Most of my projects have been wastewater treatment plants and several commercial projects. Also, my role requires me to determine code violations and interpret the codes as needed for both contractors and for the owners. That's about all I have.
Thank you. Michael Maloney?
Good afternoon, council members. My name's Mike Maloney. I'm a registered civil engineer and also a licensed land surveyor. I own and manage a consulting civil firm in Concord. We do a lot of land development, so we work with architects all the time in dealing with building's accessibility of buildings. We do a lot of construction staking as well. So from the aspect of what I could bring to the board is constructability as to tolerances. Was it built correctly, or can it be built correctly if there's certain issues relative to constructability elements? Do a lot of work with FEMA work as well, building officials involved with that, so I can help assist in FEMA determinations relative to applications. I've done a lot of plan checking for various municipalities. We've done plan checking for the town of Danville and see Livermore, so I'm familiar with the protocol of how staff interacts with the consultant team that might be presenting something. So from that standpoint, I've worked on all aspects of any type of housing or multifamily or high-rise construction.
Thank you, Michael. Next is Bob Pickett.
There we go. Sorry about that. Yeah, I have a civil engineering degree from UC Davis, an MBA from UC Berkeley. Been in real estate development and licensed general contractor for about 45 years, recently retired. I have a certificate in mediation through a course at UC Berkeley. I've been a resident of Walnut Creek for 40 years, planning commission for about 18 years now, and although those are not technical applications, they are certainly elements that familiarize me with the city of Walnut Creek.
Thank you. Do you think you're done? Philip?
Again, thank you for this opportunity. I am a licensed architect. I've practiced architectures. I've been involved in the industry since graduating from Calhoun '78, and that's been locally. I've been on the Design Review Commission for the city of Walnut Creek. I've worked mostly in residential work, but I have done commercial work, and I've done public work, and I've had my own practice since 1987. So, you know, I'm used to being the front person and being involved with projects from conceptual through construction documents through field supervision, and I think that's where I'm at. So again, I appreciate that, and it's nice to see Mark Lopez, nice to see Bob Pickett. You guys all sound great. I vote for the first four, so thank you.
Okay. Marilyn, would you answer the question, please?
Yes, I certainly will. I wanted to ask you one question. I'm in a mode where I'm only seeing you, Madam Mayor. I'm not seeing the other people. Am I supposed to switch to something else?
Yes.
See everyone?
Yes. If you go to full screen and then go to speaker view?
Yeah, that's what I'm looking.
Gallery view?
Okay, and so there's, well, I'll answer it, and then I'll play with it afterward. How is that? Thank you. Thank you, Mayor Haskew, and Mayor Pro Tem Wilk, Councilmember Silva, Francois, and Waddell for the opportunity to be here today. I'm Marilyn Weiss, and I have had over 20 years' experience of working on both Architectural Commission, Single Family Design Review Commission, and Walnut Creek's Design Review Commission in 20 years of service. So I have reviewed hundreds and hundreds of cases and projects, and been in the thick of it where people have their desires, and you need to learn how to work with them, and I manage the opportunity to find a consensus. I am a professional member of American Society of Interior Designers, which is the highest level you can reach. I am a California state certified designer. I've been working in the field for probably 35 years and have just finished my eight years on Walnut Creek's Design Review Commission. I pride myself as someone who does my homework and make sure that I know what is being offered and where the consensus needs to be found, and work very hard to build a consensus with those I work with.
Thank you, Marilyn. Question number two.
That's me. All right. Well, hi, everyone. And this question is, what is your understanding of what a Board of Appeals does? And we're going to start with Bernie on this one.
The Board of Appeals reviews, I guess you might say, when a decision has been made by the building department in which the applicant is not in agreement with, they have a certain period of time to file an appeal in which the board will hear the applicant's reasoning for the appeal. And then render decision.
Okay, thank you.
Of course.
Mike, you're up next.
You're on mute, Mike.
Sorry.
Just for logistics, if you know you're going to be up after the person speaking, unmute yourself at that point. That way we can just kind of quickly get through it to the next person. So you're Mike Brown.
Sorry about that. Well, the chief purpose of the board is to undertake a consideration of a prior approved or approval of the chief building official, and she has some latitude interpreting of the code as far as how it gets applied. Obviously, there can be disagreements of how that's applied, and our job is to take a look at the facts, take a look at the appellate, with the questions that are being brought forward, and then make a decision as to whether the appellate, the actual appeal, has merit to it. I understand it's a majority vote, so three of the five people make the decision. So having been an expert witness and having been in a court, and I understand, you know, dealing with facts and being able to make a decision and a recommendation in council with everybody else. Obviously, this is a group of people who have different skill sets, but obviously, we can assist each other in coming up with fair and what I'll call fair and applicable decisions in the building industry. Thank you.
Great. Thank you, Mike. Bob, how are you doing? You're up.
Good. I guess to sum up, my understanding of it is the Board of Appeal serves as kind of an arbitration board, probably more so than a mediation arbitration, is evaluating the merits of the two sides of the position and making a decision as to which one has the strongest case. I think one thing that's valuable about the Board of Appeals is it allows our business community to have a venue in which they can express concerns about how they're being treated in the city of Walnut Creek. And I think that, you know, as my experience of dealing with all sorts of development activity in the city of Walnut Creek, we can take those factors into effect. Also, my experience as licensed general contractor will help me to evaluate both sides and render fair.
Great. Thanks, Bob. Hi, Phil. You're up.
So again, coming sort of here at the end, having, you know, I definitely agree with my fellow individuals before me, but along with that, having to practice architecture and been involved with putting together construction documents or design development and understanding the codes and zoning, saying how we get to a point, you know, I think I bring, you know, a fair amount of knowledge in how to resolve, or at least listen to both sides, because I've been there like I think everybody else that's in the selection group, when it comes down to matters of interpreting an area of the code and how it relates to moving forward with construction on a project.
Great.
So I'm good. Okay?
Thank you, Phil. I'm Marilyn. You're next.
Hi, Kevin. I'm looking to see. I am unmuted. Good. Well, this board is a very, I think it's a very interesting and different situation, because the applicant or the developer seems to be appealing something that perhaps was prior approved in the original approval, and they're appealing the chief building inspector of Walnut Creek, Frank Kong. So it is slightly different than when we would see them appeal in a commission situation. It's a specific item, as I understand it, that there are codes under the building code, and then there are interpretations. And so it's always a matter of really looking further into whether there is some sort of, you know, happy medium you can come to, or whether it's a hard and fast, no, that isn't going to be accepted. So I think a lot of this is interpreting, getting the information from staff exactly what was done, and then going back and interpreting whether or not that is a possibility, because people see things differently, and so sometimes there is an opportunity where you can come to some sort of a happy medium or some kind of a consensus together. So to me, the work is a lot in working with people and having everyone come out with feeling that they've gotten what they need at the end of the meeting.
Great. Thank you. And Mark, let's bring us home on this question.
Okay, well, I too believe that it's important for both sides to feel like they've had their day in court, that they were provided a venue or a forum to be able to present the relevant documentary evidence and oral testimony, have it considered and weighed against the panel's expertise, and come up with a fair and just decision. I participated in kind of an ad hoc Board of Appeals for the city of Walnut Creek several years ago. Under Robert Woods was the building official, and I really enjoyed the process. We came up with a decision that I think was the right decision. Some of these cases would occur from plan check corrections that the applicant might not like, or it might be decisions in the field where the inspector requires something other than what's on the drawings or on the permit is objectionable, so to them anyway. So that's all I have for that question.
Thank you, Mark. That leaves us to question three, and I'll let them take it away.
Sorry, I'm just looking for that email with the two questions. Give me a few seconds.
Someone just want to ask a question for me? I'm sorry, I can't find it. Oh, here's a question. Suzie, just let me know. Are you aware of any appeals decided by this committee in the past?
I have not been in front of this particular board in the past from the standpoint of the work that I've done. So no, I am not familiar with that process.
And then Bob? Bob, you're on mute.
Sorry about that. I could have just crossed my fingers and said no. I'm not familiar with any activities, decisions by this board in the past.
Phil? Also, no, I've never been involved with the board or known about their decisions.
I can't remember. Mark or Marilyn next?
Marilyn.
Marilyn.
I am aware of an appeal that I was told occurred, which was an appeal of a project done by the developer Hall Equities, that Mark Hall appealed something in the way there was an interpretation, I believe, in the, it was shoring up of a ceiling, I believe, and it was not appropriate according to the building inspector. And that is the appeal that I am aware of that went on, and I also am aware that you have one that is waiting to be appealed from the senior housing development in downtown Walnut Creek. I'm not aware of the nature of that, but that is what I understand, that there is one coming up and that you'd like to get it handled.
And Mark, you got a little cheat there, but you want to answer the question?
Yes, I'm only aware of the one case that I participated in, and that was a residential, single-family residence that was going through a major addition and remodel, and the owner did not want to put up the required guardrails on his stairs and decks and filed an appeal to that code requirement. And that's all the experience I have with, or knowledge I have with appeals in Walnut Creek.
Yes, yeah, no, I have not been, I'm not familiar with any appeals.
Thank you, Bernie. Question four.
Okay. Hi, everyone. Thank you all for participating. I feel like this is the dream team of Board of Appeal.
Okay. Hi, everyone. Thank you all for participating. I feel like this is the dream team of Board of Appeal candidates. Uh, my question to you, and I believe we're starting with you, Bob. Um, are you aware of the conflict of interest rules in general? And specifically, as they could relate to your role as a board member?
Uh, yes, uh, having, having been involved in the planning commission for as long as I have and has experienced so many ethics training classes as mandatory, I'm familiar with the conflict of interest rules.
Terrific. Uh, Philip, next, same question. Are you, are you aware of the conflict of interest rules in general? And specifically, as they could relate to your role as a board member?
Um, yes, man, I also, having been on design review, as I mentioned earlier, um, I do understand that there are issues with conflict of interest and and when to bow out and when to notify. Yes, I do understand that.
And Marilyn, you're next. Mike, hi.
Thank you. Yes, of course I am. After twenty years of constant commission experience, there have been issues that have come up. Um, I am aware that if there is ever going to be um, any kind of a conflict which would affect me in any way financially or that would be within, I believe, five hundred feet of my home um, as well as if it even looked, it even had the the appearance of a conflict of interest. The best thing to do, um, I, what I have done is, one, I will call the city attorney, explain the situation and find out what the answer is on that. And two, I would then, of course, recuse myself if there was any conflict or even any, any appearance of conflict um, that could happen if I looked at that project. And so I'd recuse myself.
Thank you. Uh, Mark, are you aware of the conflict of interest rules in general? And specifically, as they could relate to your role as a board member?
Yes, I do. I was a design review commissioner in Walnut Creek for eight plus years. I was a architectural review commissioner in Pleasant Hill for almost nine years. As a practicing arbitrator, I I do comprehensive conflict of interest checks on all my cases. So I too can avoid the uh perception of bias or any kind of financial or any kind of relationship I've had with the parties. Um, I I I think um, the credibility of the panel depends on the panel being completely unbiased. And I would immediately step down, even if there was a question of of my um involvement with one of the parties.
Terrific. Thank you. And Bernie, uh, are you aware of the conflict of interest rules in general? And specifically, if they could relate to your role as a board member?
Yes, I am. As a matter of fact, my current employer requires us to have conflict of interest training um annually uh to make sure we understand the requirements.
That's great. And I think Mike is batting cleanup here. Mike, on the conflict of interest rules, are you aware of those in general? And specifically, as they could relate to your role as a board member?
I'm very well aware of the general uh elements of conflict of interest. Serving as a as an expert witness, I I I do work. I do, I do a lot of work for a lot of different developers. So in some cases, um, I'm working uh as an expert witness on, it could be the uh, a client of mine, well, not a client, but the developer I worked with in the past that's on the other side of the fence. Uh, able to kind of navigate those from an impartial standpoint. And typically, a conflict of interest would be as if something, if I if I am selected on the board, you know, a project that I might be working on, that's that's a natural just to to step down from. But from the standpoint of of working with people in the field, I think the task of this board is to be professional and then take a look at how uh, chief building official makes a decision, was it the correct decision? And is is there any merit to the uh request for consideration? Thank you.
So, um, I am next. And Phil, you're going to be first this time. Congratulations. We finally got to first. So, um, this is a more technical question, and I'm going to set it up as best I can. Um, the issue before the Board of Appeals is involves a commercial project in which the developer is proposing or has proposed and received permission entitlements to actually convert the use and do some major renovation to it. In that process, our building inspector and our building official have determined that it has tr- triggered requirements related to seismic upgrades. The developer disagrees. What sources of information and factors would you consider in order to render a decision in this case? And I'm starting with Phil.
Wow, that's a, that's a lot.
Um, and I hope I don't have to repeat it. So did everybody get?
No, no, no.
I was making it up on the fly.
Yeah, um, well, I would find it hard. I'm just going to be myself, which I always am. I would find it hard to understand why somebody would not want to do the seismic upgrades. I do understand there's a cost implication to that. Saying that, I think you you would first want to know exactly what were the seismic, what were the implications of the seismic upgrade? You'd want to be able to review the, you know, the structural calculations, the structural layout, have an opportunity to visit the site and really, you know, get an idea of what it is that the individual feels um, isn't really necessary to understand why you wouldn't want to, you know, have your building brought up to current codes. Um, having said that and having practiced architecture and having had jobs where I do a lot of building renovation, um, I haven't really come across a client in my my career that wouldn't really want to move forward on something like that. Um, so 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 that's why I would look at that and then go back through the code and see if what the engineer maybe is asking to do is above and beyond what maybe needs to be done.
Thank you.
Okay, you're welcome.
Marilyn.
Well, um, I would agree with what uh Phil just said. It seems to me that any seismic upgrade is for safety. And so I would have to get as much information as I could to understand if the reasoning for the seismic upgrade and then um, probably move forward to create as good a, a good a um, an argument about what would be the benefit for the people that are living there or people that are working there um, and get to the details. Because to me, I agree, I don't know why anyone wouldn't do a seismic upgrade. We have all had too many experiences with major earthquakes in California. And so it seems to me that, yes, it may cost some money, but it also saves you a lot way down the line. And so I would want to just get all the information I could from the experts. And we have some wonderful experts that I've worked with uh through the city and then move forward to evaluate it and see what kind of decision we could come to.
Mark.
Yes, I would probably take a little bit more strict approach to to the situation. I would, I would think I would, I would assume that there had been these negotiations between the developer and the building department, and the building department probably made a decision. Uh, I would look to the applicant or the the developer to come up with some alternative means to satisfy the requirement. The code allows this. And they have to go through a process to see if an alternative means would be as effective as what the code requires. Um, certainly, safety is is primary and that has to be considered. Uh, but I would look to the developer really supporting his position from a code compliance standpoint uh in order to 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 favorably consider his side.
Thank you.
Yeah, I probably, well, first thing I would do is um, look at what the building department considers as the trigger for the seismic requirements. And then following that, um, you definitely have to review the the calculations performed by their structural um engineer to determine how they plan to build the project. And then following that, um, if if the code requires the seismic calc, then we would find a um pertinent code and point that out to them that that is a requirement. And I agree with everybody that safety um is is the primary reason and and pursuit of the seismic code enforcement.
Thank you. Mike?
Well, I I guess there's really two approaches to this one. Uh, you get into new construction where uh, structuralists have different ways of of dealing with, uh, dealing with the seismic uh loading. Um, and then how that's carried through the building. So from the standpoint of interpretation, if 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 there's a cost involved, that's when this has, we have to take a look at that. Um, the bigger issue is, it sounds like this is more of a remodel. And when you start, you you think you might have the greatest as-bills in the world, but when you start uh removing materials, you find out that the beam that was there is not there. So now you're looking at other different applications. So that, there you have to go out and take a look at what's out there. And at that point, you have to rely upon uh the structural experts out there to make some decisions and have an integrate, basically an interaction with the chief building official. How do you solve that problem in the field? And that's one that's not done instantaneously. It's one that there's a, there's a back and forth. And at that point, I think the appeal boards has to take a look at says, uh, what's the best approach from a safety standpoint? What's the, and from an economic standpoint, does it make sense as well?
Thank you. And Bob Pickett, last to you.
Thank you. Um, yeah, you know, I would first, you you'd have to listen to both sides. I mean, the the building official is gonna you know, express why he feels that the design triggered this requirement for seismic upgrades and the developer contractor is gonna have to uh submit his arguments to it, to us. Both of those should rely on the technical uh support via codes or or other technical things that are available to us that we'd have to review. I think the issue, the way you presented it is whether or not, it's not whether seismic is good or bad, it's whether the extent of the renovation justifies triggering the requirement for the seismic upgrades. Um, I think that, you know, evaluating the the letter of the law and how it's presented and what uh, we would have to interpret how we see the requirement being triggered and if we agree with that or disagree. Um, I think as a subjective interjection would be, you know, we'd have to consider public health and safety and that might be, you know, the evaluating uh determining factor, but basically. Thanks.
You ran out of time.
I did. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, and the last question um is, is there an appeal that might be beyond your capacity? And what would you do if that were the case? And we start with Marilyn.
Well, that's very interesting because I am very honored to be sitting here with all of these incredibly talented people and uh well experienced um engineers. And I'm sure that they may have seen some of these um requirements um that I have not been involved in. So what I've done when that happens, and it's a, it's a bit to sort of um reiterate, is, one, I study a lot. I ask a lot. I read a lot and I find it all the information I can. And two, I then, and and I am not afraid, you know, to spend all the time it takes to get the information I need. Um, and to try to um to be to be learned about how I handle these um particular situations. I have been involved in appeals. I have looked to my fellow um board members or commissioners for expertise. I'm sure I would do that as well. And it's clear to me that if there was something that we're so far out of the stratosphere, I would know enough about it to say this is not for me to sit in on. But you do have alternates, and I believe that is part of the reason that you might use them.
Thank you. Mark?
Yes, um, I've been involved in many, many different project types, uh, both residential, um, commercial, and even light industrial. And so I I've covered a lot of different project types. However, if I ran up against an issue that I thought was beyond my skill sets or ability to understand in a comprehensive manner, I would definitely uh step down from the decision. Uh, because it would just wouldn't be fair for me to make a uh uh or input to a a process where I didn't know what I was talking about.
Thank you. Bernie?
Yeah, over the years, I've come across a lot of problems that I am not able to answer. And I relied heavily on a lot of um former engineers and engineers uh that surround me. So I'm not, um, I I I don't, I know I don't know it all. And I do do a lot of research and I do listen to um others for their information. And I do rely on on good engineers. Um, and so, um, that's my answer.
Well, sometimes uh questions come up that stump people. I think that's why you have at least five people on the board to address issues like that. Uh, I think it's incumbent upon a member to to take a look at the facts and and if you need time to study it to make a a a an informed decision, you need to do that. Sometimes that may require some technical input uh, uh, addressing a particular uh design question or a application of a particular code. Um, you know, we have situations now from a zoning standpoint where you've got Senate bills that are changing how we look at planning documents. So it's a question, how do you navigate that? And that's where five people sit down and scratch their heads and says, you know, how do we come up with a fair impartial and 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 a decision that that's fair and equitable to the the person's asked question, but also respect to the the chief building official as well.
Thank you. Um, wow.
Yeah, I think that uh it'd be fairly quick order for me to evaluate my capabilities in making a rendering a decision uh position on any kind of application that came forward. And uh, there are certainly a thorough of uh resources out there to educate ourselves uh whenever these things happen. And Supreme Court of the United States, they don't know everything. However, if if there was anything that I felt was beyond my capability, I wouldn't hesitate to uh step down and admit that and say, this is, this is something I shouldn't be making a decision on.
Um, thank you, yeah. Um, great responses by everybody before me. I remember in an engineering class when I was back in college and my professor told me I probably would never be a great structural engineer, which I already knew that, but he said, always surround yourself with smart engineers. Um, so I think that's the key to any project, but it's really being able to do the research, understand what what it is you're looking at. I I believe I can pretty much because of my years of knowledge, can look at something and analyze it. And if I do need to, you know, step back and say, no, this is beyond my ability, I'd be the first, to be honest, to do that. I would assume most of what we are seeing constructed in Walnut Creek with the with the board that I'm hearing, that everything could probably pretty well be answered. Um, I'd say the only lack of knowledge that I would ever say instantly would be we were in a multi-story, you know, steel frame structure, something you'd see in Oakland or San Francisco. But other than that, I'd feel relatively comfortable working along with the other members of the board.
Thank you. All right, well, the worst part of the interviews are over. They're done. Um, so uh, we will now um deliberate a little bit and um try and find a way to I'm looking at my paper and it is going to make my head hurt trying to find out um exactly who I think um should do it because you all have done so extraordinarily well. I'm very pleased um that you all um applied for this. Um, but we will, um, as the, as the council, um, have about two minutes to review our own personal um evaluations of the subject. And then we will, um, if if the city clerk would please put the spreadsheet on so we know where we're aiming. I'd appreciate it. And then we will call everybody and there you go. All right, so this is how we're going to fill it out. Um, oh my gosh, my name is first. Well, that wouldn't have been my choice, but all right, I will take it. So give me a couple of minutes to review my notes and um, I will be back with my interpretation.
Are we going to cut back on and give our, I I think we're ranking these in the individuals for, I I I, can you just advise what we're supposed to be doing?
Yeah, I I'm not sure if we're ranking, ranking or if we're just putting who we prefer for our top three.
Um, actually, um, let's rank them from one to six. And with this group, even to be a a one is pretty much a compliment. Um, so just assign So just assign, for example, one candidate gets a six, another candidate gets a five. And then hopefully with that range, we will have a clear understanding of.
So the best candidate gets a six?
Best category gets a six, yes.
Okay.
I mean, the best.
And we're, just for clarification, we have to pick three regular and two alternates because of the potential of a conflict of interest or unavailability. Somebody has to rotate into the seat.
Exactly. Yes.
That's correct. And you could also put someone on the eligibility list if you wish.
Thank you for adding that. I was hoping somebody would. All right, so I have some arithmetic to do, so if you will, let me do that.
So I have a question. Are we all discussing this then in open session? Normally we have, of course, gone behind and, and added these up. And then Susie or the city clerk, whoever, whoever is in that position then alerts the candidates. Are we just doing this all right now, everything during open session?
I believe, yes, with the limitations. Oh, Steve, maybe you have something to save me from making.
Mayor, I was just going to ask if you want me to respond to that.
I do, you, yes, yes, I do.
So council member Will, or Mayor Perdern Will. Yes, this does need to be done in open session as the council always does when it selects. And because you are on a teleconference meeting right now, it actually requires roll call votes of all the actions. And so the council members would have to identify their, their rankings, one through six as a group. Typically what happens is the council recalls, is you put it on a ballot. The city clerk does retain those ballots. They are public records. And so ultimately, the, the information is public anyway. And so in this one, you do have to identify it as, as indicated.
if you're, I have grudgingly come up with some ranking system. So I'm ready.
Can I make a comment here? If we're going one at a time, what happens is the last two of us may not be, have the ability to somehow impact and change our votes accordingly in order to, is there a way for us to submit our votes and then have them read aloud? So that basically we all vote
Simultaneously?
Simultaneously. That seems a little fairer.
So if the, and to the city clerk as well too, if the council wanted to email your votes to the city clerk, those emails would be public records. And then the city clerk could populate the table once she's received emails from all five of you. But again, for the benefit of the council, benefit of the public, all of those emails are public. And so anyone can see how the council members ranked individually at any time.
And it will all be public here.
Correct.
When she populates it, I just hate the first person versus the fifth person, you know.
Yeah, right. It could change the vote going down the thing if we do it publicly.
That's correct. You can do it that way. If the council wishes to do it that way, you should provide that direction.
I, I am going to ask the council to shake their heads if they are in agreement that they will now email city clerk Martinez. And with their rankings, I'm seeing everybody. Yes, I've seen everybody, Kevin. Did I see your head? Okay, so I'm going to essentially call a five minute break of public filling of air so that we have time to do that thoughtfully. So we will reconvene formally here in five minutes to give us the time to email the clerk.
And again, six is the bet. Six is top. Six five four three two one. Okay.
Yes. Okay, got it?
Yep.
Great. See you in five minutes.
Yes, we're ready.
Okay, 15 seconds or do we dive in?
We're ready to dive in.
Okay. All right, so it is now time to reveal the results of the election.
Can we share? Here we go.
Ready. So I'm going to say that based on the election, Mark Lopez, Michael Maloney and Bob Pickett are the three assignees to the board. And that, let's see. Do we miss? Philip and Marilyn would be the alternates and and that we are pleased that, and hope that Mr. Volkman, I think the council has to substantiate this or support my statement. But I believe if I ask the council's approval that Bernie Mark would be the eligible. on the list of eligible people to call.
I'll be happy to make a motion. So move to point mark, Michael and Bob with Philip and Marilyn as alternates with Bernie on the list.
Thank you, I'm hoping.
I would second that if we're, but do we, does staff need us to indicate which alternate is number one? And which is number two, because this would say that if someone cannot, must recuse themselves, it would be Philip first.
So Madam Mayor, if I may, the council can provide that direction. It's not required, though. In terms of the alternates, when the hearings are scheduled, we would have to look at, if the council doesn't provide that direction, we'd definitely look at people's availability on the alternates while we're scheduling the meetings. The hearings of the Board of Appeals are very infrequent and generally special meetings. And so it might depend on who's available on a particular day, too, that we're trying to schedule.
So go ahead.
I second the motion.
Okay, all right, we have a motion and a second. May I have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Waddell.
Hi.
Councilmember Silva.
Hi.
Councilmember Frank Waugh.
Hi.
Mayor Protonwell.
Hi.
And Mayor Haskew.
Hi. Thank you very much, and thank you very much to all of the people that did apply. You, it was a tough vote for me, and I'm sure it was a tough vote for everyone on the council. And we really appreciate your stepping forward for this. Okay. Then on to the next item. At this moment, we will take public communications related to agenda item five, items on the consent calendar. And the items are the adoption of a resolution approving side letter agreements with our bargaining units and the adoption of a resolution to amend the local emergency resolution. Does any member of the public wish to provide comments at this time? I noticed there are two raised hands, but if there are any more, please so raise your hands now. And if you're calling in on the phone, you need to press star nine. City Council, would you, excuse me, city clerk, would you please welcome anybody in?
Yes, first up, we have Bob Nolan.
Bob, it looks like you're muted. Please unmute yourself so we can hear what you say. One more, one more opportunity, Bob. You're on mute according to what I read on the screen. Would you please unmute yourself? All right, let's go on to the next speaker, city clerk. And if, if he, Bob wants to come back, he can let us know.
Okay, next we have Scott Rafferty.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon, Scott.
Good afternoon. You know, our municipal employees are subject to protective collective bargaining agreements. They've already endured layoffs, and now they're accepting furloughs. The staffing level of all these employees is no less essential to our city's way of life than the correct staffing level of the police. By contrast, the police force has never justified its budget. It doesn't have a collective bargaining agreement, and it has now been allowed to over hire by four positions. Reality is, we're in a very difficult position with a $12 million budget hole. And you simply cannot lay off and furlough enough librarians, enough recreation workers, enough social workers, enough civil servants to balance this whole unless the police participate in these painful reductions. Neither personnel regulations nor any police contract, which is now expired, has seniority provisions. So you should direct the manager to work with Chief Chaplin to determine how to distribute the necessary reductions in a fair way that is consistent with retaining the most qualified and productive police officers long term. I mean, I sense that there is an effort to marginalize all criticism of the police by making it politically that people are out to do radical reductions. That's not the case. But they need to be held accountable, and they need to judge, to justify their budget. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Scott. I, I believe that some of the issues raised by Mr. Rafferty will be, could be addressed. Does any council member wish to pull an item? Did Bob, did Mr. Nolan come back?
I do see him back on, but with no hand raised.
Okay. At this moment, is in the, yes, the city attorney has raised.
Madam Mayor, if I may, if we could ask the city clerk, did we receive any additional written comments on the items on the consent calendar?
Thank you. Thank you for the reminder.
We have not received any additional written comments.
So as the council is aware, there is a letter that's posted to the website already in the agenda from Mr. Rafferty, as well as a letter on, on the second item. And the council's had the opportunity to see those as well, too. So thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. All right, back to my initial question, which, well, I've had many questions. But this is the question before the board right now, which is, does any council member wish to pull an item on the consent calendar?
I'd like to pull item 5A.
5A?
Then I'll pull 5B.
Oh, right, that makes both of them, right. That being the case, I'm going to ask if there is a staff report on item A. Does anybody want to step forward with a staff report? No, okay, having.
City manager, here he comes, here he comes.
Okay. Sorry, Dan, I should have just said your name, huh?
All right, that's all right. Can you repeat, please? You just want an overview of item 5A?
I do, and I think the speaker actually raised some issues and included maybe some classifications that the city council has no control over as well as, he, he said that there were layoffs at this moment. And would you address both of those items, please?
Sure, so what this item is related to is that there, we have four employee organizations or associations that have assigned contract and are currently under contract, which means that we are obligated to honor that contract and that any changes need to be on a voluntary basis with those employee associations. Our confidential unit, our professional unit, and our management unit have all voluntarily agreed to take eight furlough days, which is the equivalent of 3% on an annualized basis, which is the amount of the pay increase that was scheduled for this fiscal year relative to their closed contracts, hence, you know, negating that cost increase. The cumulative amount is roughly $450,000. And the intent, and I very much want to thank all of these employees in these three unions that have agreed to do this, it will save no less than three layoffs of employees. Employees in these three groups are quite widespread. We have employees in our public works, arts and recreation. Most, most departments have employees represented here. There may be a couple from the police department, but most of our police officers and certainly are sworn are either the Police Officers Association or, or the Police Management Association. And some of our dispatchers are represented by a Teamsters unit, organization. However, there may be a few that are represented in one of, one of these other groups. That said, the PMA and the POA, their contracts are currently not closed. At least POA is not. PMA opens here in a, in a couple of months. But in any event, the intent of the activity of these three unions is to make this voluntary sacrifice in order to help save jobs. It will save a minimum of three upwards to four, four and a half positions as we work through the details, which helps with our budget matter. And so I very much want to thank everyone in those particular employee associations who voted to do this. Thank you on behalf of Walnut Creek Organization and on behalf of our fellow teammates.
Thank you. Are there any additional questions from the council of, of city manager Buckshai? Or any comments?
Thank you, Mayor. I pulled the item because I too wanted to thank the employees in the professional unit, the general management unit, and the confidential unit for making this sacrifice to help save the jobs of their coworkers and their fellow employees. These are difficult times, and this reflects their true understanding of how difficult it is to make ends meet in a, during a pandemic like this. So I just appreciate it, and I'm sure my colleagues would say the same. Thank you, Mayor.
I see heads and shakes and appreciation. Mayor Proton.
I just wanted to say and echo what councilmember Silva had said. We heard a lot over the last two plus months of finance meetings and of course, the council meetings as well. And it was typically in regards to what can we do to help furlough, to accept employees for furloughs rather than layoffs? And this is something that these three unions did and helps us to reduce the amount of layoffs. And this is exactly what we were hoping for. So these are the kind of things that will help everybody in the city, help the employees. And ultimately, you ensure that people within their families are able to provide and plan for themselves as well. So again, thank you to the unions that agreed to this. And again, I, I appreciate it.
Thank you. I second, third and fourth that. Matt, please, do you have a comment?
Thank you, Mayor. I want to echo my previous councilmember's comments and thank profusely the three groups that have volunteered these furlough days to save some of their fellow employees, hopefully up to four, four and a half employees from being laid off. These are very difficult times. In, in my business and my law firm and other businesses that I'm aware of, these same sort of difficult decisions are being made, and people are sacrificing for the common good so that we can protect one another and protect each other's jobs. And I, I really appreciate these particular groups doing that here and doing that for our organization.
I'm happy to make a motion, Mayor.
I was going to ask for one, thank you.
But I would like to check with the attorney. Do I have to make three motions or can I make one and consolidate them?
Councilmember, you can make one, just referencing each of the three resolutions that are before the council this evening.
I move to adopt the three resolutions approving side letters of agreement between the city of Walnut Creek and the following three units, the confidential unit, the general management unit, and the professional unit regarding the implementation of mandatory furloughs.
Second.
Thank you, may I have a roll call?
Councilmember Silva. Mayor Protonwell.
Hi.
Councilmember Francois.
Hi.
Councilmember Waddell. Mayor Haskew.
Hi.
Motion carries forward to one.
Thank you, on to the next item. And would somebody like to address this at the staff level? I see a new face. I'm guessing that's the person addressing it.
It is, thank you, Mayor, Terry Kilgore, Assistant City Manager. So this evening, we've brought before you an amendment to the emergency ordinance requesting the council approve two separate but related items. First is to add a couple of zoning classifications that we did not include in the original rebound program. That is personal services, which we think of as hair and nail salons primarily, personal improvement services like gyms, as well as cultural institutions like the library and lensing wildlife. And what this allows us to do is in no way does it supersede the state and county guidance that we're receiving on which businesses are allowed to operate and which form. But what it empowers the city manager to, to do through delegation of the council authority is to say, as those restrictions lift, staff is able to be a little more creative in how we allow those businesses to operate. So for instance, we may allow them to operate in private pat, in private parking areas that normally they wouldn't be allowed to go into or potentially even out in some of the city rideaway. Obviously, we'll have some practical matters to manage in terms of the restrictions. The state cosmetology board is put in place to ensure that we have safe and sanitary operations. And we've created some, a list of do's and don'ts that we're currently still reviewing with leaders in the salon community as we expect them to be the first out of the gate. So that would be the first part of this action. The second is a request to delegate the authority to the city manager to assign enforcement officers to enact the recently adopted county administrative fines for noncompliance with the health orders. So as I'm sure you all are aware, and there was a lot of media coverage on the council, the council, the county set up some administrative fines and mandated that cities begin using these to, to ensure that businesses and in some degree, individuals are adhering to county orders. And so previously, that authority rested only with the police department. And this gives us the opportunity to really delegate that work to staff that can manage an administrative fine process a little easier. For instance, our code enforcement officers are more familiar with this type of approach that has warnings and notices and appeals that are different than what we see on the police department side. So with that, I'm available for any questions.
Great, council, it's come back to us. Do we want to ask any questions at all? Mayor Proton.
Thank you, and thank you, Terry. Well, so one of the questions is, is there a way for, yeah, because I think we want to get away from the fact that just police are going to be the ones that would be doing the enforcing. But how would this work after hours? I'm just thinking eight, nine, 10 o'clock on a Friday or Saturday night. How is there somebody that's civilian or an unarmed police officer able to potentially do code enforcement?
Yes, so we're looking at a couple of options. You know, for those after hours, evenings and weekends, potentially bringing back code enforcement officers on a overtime basis. We're looking at potentially using our PSOs who are used to dealing with the public and interacting and have access to police department communications quickly if they should need assistance. And then, as always, the police department will be present as available, and they will be helping document violations that they observe, taking, you know, body worn camera footage, writing up summaries and passing those on to code enforcement who can deal with that on a regular workday basis. So we're not certain 100% which way we're going to go yet, but those are the three most likely scenarios that we're considering.
Okay, thank you. The other question I have is one that's more general, which is, has a date been given? Or maybe it's already occurring that salons can open outdoors? And what could that potentially look like downtown or in shopping centers?
Yes, actually, salons can be open outdoors as long as they meet the, the guidance of the cosmetology. It's actually our zoning right now that is holding them up here in Walnut Creek. And so this action this evening kind of takes that, that rein off of things and lets them begin to spill out into private parking. and lets them begin to spill out into private parking areas, as I mentioned, we're, we've created some do's and don'ts, which we think are a fair summary of the requirements of the cosmetology board for sanitary reasons, as well as to protect our storm drains, to make sure that we're not creating any environmental hazards, and so if council approves this, we'll, we'll move into implementation mode where the salons and, and can get moving quickly.
Great, thank, thank you, Terry, if there's no other questions, I'll be happy to make a motion, but I first want to hear if there is any questions.
One more.
Oh, Terry, thank you very much for your overview, as I understand it, the rules, and maybe these are coming from the cosmetology state board or the county, not sure, basically salons and barber shops can only be expanding into outdoor areas that are immediately adjacent to their property, is that correct?
That is correct, and it's, I'm sure there's very good practical reasons, it's a little disappointing because we were trying to brainstorm a bit more creatively, you know, could we create a, a use of the garage space or, you know, do something where people could share outdoor space a little bit, but yes, that is one of the constraints on, on how the salons can operate outdoors, because they need to be adjacent to their actual place of business.
And they're not going to be allowed to wash down the space when they're done, which would risk the storm drain system and the water system, they're going to have to sweep up everything.
Correct.
Thank you.
Okay, I'm not seeing any hands, Mayor Purten, would you like to make your motion?
I'll make the motion, sure, I move to adopt resolution amending the proclamation of a local emergency, adopt pursuant to resolution number 20-12 to include additional land use categories as part of the business reopening strategies for Walnut Creek, and divest authority in the city manager to designate enforcement officials pursuant to Contra Costa County Urgency Ordinance number 2020-21.
Thank you.
Second.
All right, we've got, we've got both requirements, city clerk, would you please call the roll?
Mayor Proton Wilk.
Aye.
Councilmember Francois.
Aye.
Councilmember Silva.
Aye.
Councilmember Waddell.
Aye.
Mayor Haskew.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously.
All right, and it is my pleasure to announce that this meeting is adjourned, and unless there will be another special meeting because it's needed, we will not meet again until early September, so good night, everybody, and thank you for all you've done, I, thank you.